And me being outgoing vice chairman, I would love to turn this meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Freddie Williamson, to call to order and conduct business until a chairman have been selected.
Got it. Good. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Good afternoon to everyone. Thank you for being a part of our July Board Meeting. Pray that you had a wonderful Fourth of July. We're thankful for everybody that present with us tonight. Start with invitation, Mr. Locklear, if you'll leave us an invitation, please.
The weekend. And I'm not sure I mispronounced the name, but I would like to remember that family in prayer. And I think more details is coming about the name of the child, but it was a fourth grade child from Magnolia.
Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here. Thank you, God, for granting us traveling graces on our way here, Father God. And Lord, I want to honor Dr. Emanuel's requests. And just remember, everyone, Lord, throughout our district, that's lost loved ones in the past month or so and recently. Thank you, Lord, once again, for allowing us to come to this place. And Lord, I pray that you bless us in this meeting. Let your face shine upon us. And Father God, I ask that each of us feel your presence during this meeting and when we leave this place and wherever we go. I pray that this meeting focuses on you and that you will have us do what's best for the children of Robinson County. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Locklear. I do want to acknowledge that our chair is present with us, and we're certainly thankful for Smith, that he is home. And I know prayers went up for him, and we're just thankful to do that. Also, I want to just, I'm going to be open and honest. I'm thankful to the good Lord for the year that we had last year, his protection. Every day almost, we were hearing something or read something in the paper that happened at a place called the Public Schools. And I just thank the good Lord that he protected us. And it's time to start praying for our new academic school year. So as a leader of this district, I'm asking for your prayers that our students will be safe and employees safe as we continue this business of education. I do want to take a minute and recognize our new chief communications officer, Ms. Jessica Horn. Her first official meeting. Thank you for being with us. Just welcome her on board. And Jessica, I ask you to introduce who's going to take your place from the Robinsonian, who's with us tonight. I think she's...
Miss Tamika Sinclair. She's awesome.
Sinclair, if you'll stand up so we can know who's writing about us.
Yes.
Great, thank you. At this time, we're continuing on our agenda, throwing in of our new board members. We have with us tonight Honorable Ms. Brooke Clark, District Court Judge. Before we start that process, we do want to invite families that happen to come and take pictures and be a part of that. We're going to start with Ms. Ocean. And before that, I think, Ms. Ocean, you asked in that evangelist, Glenda Camerich, can pray before you take your oath of office sworn in.
Praise the Lord, everybody. We bow our heads. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you right now for your goodness and your mercies towards us. Thank you, God, for all that you have done in bringing us into this place. Father God, in the name of Jesus, as we come before you, all of these people tonight who are being sworn in for these particular duties and offices, Lord, we ask that you touch them, that you lead them, that you guide them in the direct path. In the name of Jesus, Lord, look on them as they guide the children, the future of this county, of this nation, of this country. In the name of Jesus, that you protect and keep them, Lord. Help them do that job that they are to do. In the name of Jesus, we pray all of these blessings in your mighty name. Look on Marissa Ocean, oh God, and Melissa, in the name of Jesus, in each and every heart, God. We know that you're able, Lord. Let us hear from you and take leadership from you, God, and guidance from you, that we might direct this new generation, this next generation, in a way where we won't shoot up one another, but we'll get an education, God. Help them, Lord. Anoint them for the offices and for the positions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. This time, we're asking Ms. Ocean if you will come and is it all right for family members come, please? If you'll come, please?
I'd just like to say it's an honor for, first of all, to be here and to administer the oaths to the newly elected board members. Ms. Ocean, would you like to be sworn or affirmed? All right, Ms. Ocean, I'm going to ask that you repeat after me. Ordinarily, I read the oath and just have you say, "I do," or so help me God at the end. But these words are so important, and this oath is so important, I'm going to have you repeat the words, okay?
I am Melissa Ocean.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
Will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a board member.
As a board member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Public Schools of Robinson County.
Of the Public Schools of Robinson County.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to get a picture, I think now would be the time?
Good afternoon, everyone. I thank you all for coming out on our first night as we take on our new duties. I ask that you pray for us all. Keep us in your thoughts and prayers as we take on this gigantic task to lead the public schools of Robinson County in the right direction. And I just thank you all for believing in me. Have a good night.
Thank you. At this time, I ask Mr. Britt if you will come, please, and your family.
All right, Mr. Britt, if you would repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Trey Britt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a board member.
As a board member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
The Public Schools of Robinson County.
Of the Public Schools of Robinson County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, there's a lot of people in this room I need to thank because I got a good little crowd here tonight. But I just want to say that thank you to the good Lord Savior and Mr. Wayne Smith, spot that I'm feeling. Being a teacher for 10 years, I know exactly what it feels like to be there in their shoes. And we're going to do what's best for the students and teachers of Robinson County. That's bottom line, plain and simple. Too many times, I'll just tell you like it is. There's a lot of division, and we need unity. It's time for unity. And again, I thank you to, thank you to people, District Gate, that voted me in, and I plan to do my best. Thank you much.
At this time, we're, at this time, we're asking Judge Clark if she would administer the oath of office to our reelected board members, Dr. Emanuel.
Dr. Emanuel, if you would place your left hand on the Bible and then raise your right and repeat after me.
I state your name. I, Lyndy Emanuel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a board member.
As a board member.
The Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
The Public Schools of Robinson County.
Of the Public Schools of Robinson County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skills and abilities.
So help me God. Congratulations.
The only call I mean I have is I hope to continue to work as a unit with this board. And in order to grow, we all have to change. And I think this board has changed, and the system has grown. And I'm very proud to be part of and continue to be part of it. And I do want to call recognition to my family that have been very supportive. The young man standing up here was my campaign chair. That was Colton James Hunt alias KJ. And I wanted to call special attention to him. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to our new elected board members, and congratulations, Dr. Emanuel and Ms. Smith, who again cannot be with us tonight. And so Judge Clark, if you'll be available to come back hopefully in August and mid...
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your support. Thank you. Next item on our agenda for tonight is selection of the board chair for the academic school year 2223. At this time, I would open the floor for nominations to serve as chairman of the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County. Mr. Lowry?
Dr. Williamson, I'd like to, at this time, nominate Mr. John Simmons to be chairman of the Public Schools of Robinson County School Board.
Is that second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Lawson, second that. Any other nominations? If not, then I'm going to move that we close the selection process, and we'll proceed with the vote. Are you ready for the questions?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Congratulations to our new chair, John Simmons. Just hit the button to come. This time, I would turn the meeting over to our chair, Mr. Simmons, for the election of our vice chair. Chairman Simmons?
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be selected chair by all our board members. I want to thank y'all. And I'm going to do what God put me here to do, and that's make sure our school is the best in the state. Some's going to get mad because it's been for a long time how, this is how it used to be. It's not anymore. As policy dictates, that's where it's going to be. With that being said, we're going to move on to the vice chair. Going to open the floors up for any nomination for vice chair. Mr. Henry. Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Emanuel.
I yield to Mr. Henry. He, I think he was hitting the button and it went out.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to nominate Dr. Terry Locklear for vice chair.
Okay. They have a second? Okay. On the floor for anybody else? Mr. Trey Britt?
I'd like to nominate Randy Lawson for vice chair.
Okay, anybody else? Second? All right. Number second for Mr. Lawson. Anybody else? If not, the nomination's going to be closed. We will take a vote. All in favor for Mr. Terry? By raising your hand? Okay, we have four for Mr. Terry. All in favor for Mr. Randy? Raise your hand. We have six for Mr. Terry. I'm sorry, Mr. Randy. Mr. Randy is going to be elected as vice chair. You will take your seat, Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I do want to acknowledge our former chair, Mr. Mike Smith, to thank you for your leadership and your work as chairman of the board for the Public Schools of Robinson County. Outstanding work. Also say again to our former vice chair, thank you so much for your work, for your leadership, Ms. Farby. Thank you.
And I'm going to echo on that, Mr. Chair, former chair, Mike Smith. Thank you. You did a great job, along with Ms. Brenna. You did outstanding job. I thank you, and I will be calling on y'all. At this time, we're going to go ahead and do our committees. We'll go ahead and get out of the way. Dr. Williams, pass one of these out for me. While he doing that, I go ahead and announce the committees. There are five committees for the Public Schools of Robinson County. The first one is construction. The construction chair is going to be the vice chair, Mr. Randy Lawson, Ms. Melissa Ocean, Mr. Trey Britt, and Mr. Henry Brewer. The second one's going to be the finance committee. Finance chair is going to be Mr. Vontae Leach, Ms. Melissa Ocean, Mr. Trey Britt, and Mr. Terry Locklear. The policy committee is going to be the chairman, the chairperson, is going to be Mr. William Gentry, Ms. Melissa Ocean, Mr. Terry Locklear, and Mr. Craig Lowery. The curriculum is going to be about Linda Emanuel. She's going to be the chairperson, Mr. Mike Smith, Mr. Henry Brewer, Mr. Craig Lowery. And the grievance committee, excuse me, is going to be Mr. Craig Lowery as the chairperson, Dr. Emanuel, Mr. Mike Smith, and Mr. Henry Brewer. On the back, there's some policy I want to go over right quick. The first one is going to be policy 2021, Section C of that. It's going to be conflict interest. Mr. Cole, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Cole, can you pull that policy up for us and go to the Section C of it? 2121, Section C of that policy. Right there. This policy here talks about soliciting or receiving any gifts, favors, rewards, service, or promises, or rewards, or including promises of future employment. Like I told Dr. Wass, I'm going to talk, Dr. Williamson, Ms. Melissa, if I call, I'm going to ask that they get an interview. I'm not going to guarantee anybody's going to get a job. And I'm going to hold every board member to that policy. Next policy is going to be 2127, Section C, 1, 2, and A. It deals with board technology. This policy here, a lot of us have Facebook, TikTok, or whatever it may be. Anything that transpired with the Public Schools of Robinson County, you cannot comment on it on Facebook or anything. I know in the past, some of us have got on Facebook because they was mad. That's not going to happen anymore. This policy dictates that you cannot do that. I'm going to make sure that we follow this policy also. The second policy is 2220. It deals with the spokesperson for the Public Schools of Robinson County. There's only four people that can go to the media, to the newspaper, to Facebook, excuse me, to speak about the Public Schools of Robinson County. That's the chairman, which is myself, and I nominate Mr. Vice Chair Randy Lawson. If newspaper call you, or who it may be, and you want to comment, before you do that, my advice to you is to get in contact with me. If you cannot get in contact with me, then you need to get in contact with the vice chair. And the first thing he's going to ask you, did you get in contact with me? And then he's going to try. If it's not, then he will make the decision. The second person is Dr. Williamson, whoever he chooses to be the spokesperson. And who would your choice be?
Jessica Horn says I choose.
Okay. Ms. Jessica will be that. The next policy is policy 2230, the board committees, which we already been over that. The second policy is, I'm sorry, next policy is 2335. That deals with the material that the board receives by that policy. It dictates that we shall receive our board package four days before our meeting, which will be on that Wednesday. If it anything other than that, me and Dr. Williamson would discuss that, and then I will inform the board member. But you should be receiving your package now on Wednesdays instead of that Friday. The next policy deals with, is 6420, Section A. That's the policy about the superintendent. He has the authority to authorize up to $90,000, whatever it may be, before he brings it to the board. But if he goes one penny over, then it's got to come to the board. And the last one is the budget planning, policy 8100, Section B. This policy dictates that in January of every year, the superintendent and his cabinet will start working on their budget. Then come May the first or the first meeting in May, Dr. Williamson, his cabinet will present to the board the budget for that school, upcoming school year. After that, you have a few days. It must be delivered to the county commissioners for their approval. Then it comes back to us. With that being said, we're going to move on to our next agenda. With that being said, we're gonna move on to our next agenda. Is there anything that anybody'd like to add to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I thought I saw Chairman of our Board of Commissioners, Ms. Wixie Stevens in the room. If she's standing, you need to acknowledge if she's still with us.
Yes, Ms. Stevens, Chair Lady Stevens. She's the Chair Lady of the Public, I'm sorry, the Robinson County Board of Commissioner. We thank you for being here. We're glad to have you. Like I said, does anyone have any, I'm sorry, one other thing too before I go there. The way I wanna do it, far as question wise, if Ms. Melissa, Mr. Bobby gets up there and presents something, instead of us buzzing in, raising our hand, I might get this right, talking to Dr. Williamson or the Attorney. We're gonna start from the Vice Chair. We're gonna go all the way down to Mr. Trey Britt. We'll come back to the Vice Chair. Then we'll go to Mr. Leach. Then we'll go all the way down to Mr. Gentry. Then we'll come back. And then hopefully, all our questions will be answered. And then we can move on. Does anybody have anything they wanna add to the agenda? I'm sorry. Dr. Emanuel. Let me find you first, Dr. Emanuel.
You got me.
Okay, there you go.
I don't wanna add anything to the agenda. I wanna go back to the comments you made on 2127, 1, 2, A, B, Board Member Technology Uses. I understand where you're coming from, but there's also a thing called the First Amendment and people's right to, you know, to publish and talk. So I think there's a fine line, in my opinion, this is my opinion, and the lawyers, maybe he's there, in saying, you know, Board members can't use the technology and express opinion. I can understand if it's, we in closed session and you can't, I totally understand that. But I don't know about walking the line between First Amendment and saying Board members can't put anything online. I mean, Board members, they have rights as individuals. But I do respect what you said about, you know, keeping the integrity of our school system and our policies and all. But to say they can't, that might be going a little too far, you think? And we might need the lawyer to respond on that.
Let me clarify what I meant by that. If, I'll use Dr. Williamson if you don't mind. If Dr. Williamson is a public person and we vote on something and he don't like it, he comments and it's not good for the school system, he's commenting all kind of bad stuff, and a Board member or a school employee charms in on it. That's what I'm referring to. I'm not saying they can't be on there and say something about the school system. It's stuff like that I'm talking about. That's what the policy is about.
Mr. Chair, if I may, please.
Yes, sir.
Is our School Board Attorney, Ms. Grady, are you online?
I am.
Okay, can you comment on Dr. Emanuel's question, please?
Yeah, I don't think the policy really talks about what they can and can't say. I really think that Dr. Emanuel's right. His First Amendment right to say what you want. What the policy, if you look at the policy, and I'm, I've got it pulled up and looking at it, the policy just talks about the use of the technology. Just, just provides guidelines as far as the use of the technology that the public schools provide. Doesn't, doesn't do anything about folks', as, you know, personal stuff. So, you know, I, I think, I think that, you know, if, if a Board member wants to comment, they can. I understand what John's saying. Probably not the best thing to do as far as unity of the Board, but they can comment.
Mr. Gentry?
When we, I say we, as Board members.
Your mic, Dr. Emanuel. Your mic up, man.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
When we, as Board members, were elected to this office, and we, we heard it again tonight when these new Board members were sworn in, that they were accepting the responsibility to uphold the integrity of the Constitution, and that's, part of it is free speech, I understand that. But, but a part of that is that you use good judgment for the advancement and the building up and the progression of education for our students. We, we pray about that every time we come to this meeting. We heard a wonderful prayer about that tonight. Again, the oath of office encompasses that. So I believe that there is an amendment, or at least an addition, in order to be added to our policies that, that we accept and that we devote our intentions to the building up of the Public Schools of Robinson County and not to compromise the mission that we have in the Public Schools of Robinson County.
Anybody else? Mr. Henry?
Mr. Simmons, in all due respect, I think is, each one of us is individual Board members. We were all duly elected by the public and we offer a service to our students, our schools, and the public. And I feel that we have, just like Mr. Grady mentioned, that we have the right to communicate with those folks. But I'm wholeheartedly in the mindset that we keep a positive atmosphere, to keep harmony amongst our Board, keep unity, and do what's right for the school system to move forward. But I don't think we should look at infringing to the point that we're telling each other's when, when and who they can talk to. I just really don't. I think out of respect, though, Board members should, should relay any in-depth conversation that may be adversity to our lead, our Superintendent. Cause we have hired him to do a job and we've gotta work with him.
With that being said, Mr. Henry, I'm gonna say it just like this here. And I said to Dr. Emanuel just then, when it's negative being said about our school and you charm in on it, that's what I'm talking about. I didn't say you couldn't be on Facebook. Didn't say you couldn't be on TikTok, none of that. I said charm in on stuff that's inappropriate being said about our schools. That's what the policy states. Anybody else? Somebody charm in? Oh, okay, okay. I wanna add some things to the agenda. About the grass cutting contract. And the H-backs, the air conditioning systems. Anybody else? Yeah, information. Mr. Leach? The complex of Red Springs. Anybody else? Okay, with that being said, we'll move on with our agenda. Need a motion to adopt amendment, I'm sorry, the agenda. First by Mr. Henry. Second by Mr. Gentry. Approval of the minutes, open session? I'm sorry.
Said I would like to address.
Okay.
In the minutes of the last meeting, I am referring to Page 6, Number 7, Recommendation for Architectural Design Firm. It is stated in, beginning with the third line in that paragraph, substitute motion was made by Mr. William Gentry and seconded by Mr. Randy Lawson to delay action, to delay, to delay the next Board meeting to allow for the input of new members. And I, I was not asking to delay the next Board meeting. I was asking to delay action. There's a big difference there in the wording.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would you go back and, did you actually vote on the adoption of the agenda?
No, we didn't, I'm sorry, we'll go back to that.
Yes, go ahead and vote on that. You have a motion and a second, you didn't need to.
We need to vote on, approve the agenda. All in favor? It's approved, approval of the minutes, all in favor?
With the correction, Mr. Chairman.
Correction, I'm sorry. Hold on, hold on, minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
First item of information is the North Carolina High School Principal of the Year, Mr. Dronel Hunt.
Good evening. Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, Board members. On Friday, July 1st, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association announced their State Award winners for the 2021-2022 school year. Out of 431 high schools and 431 high school principals, the Public Schools of Robinson County had the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Principal of the Year, and that was Mr. Jason Suggs. A statement from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association reads, "Jason Suggs is the principal at St. Paul's High School and has served as principal since 2015. He is an alumnus of the school and has been pleased to preside over seven years of academic and athletic growth at the school. Even with the cloud of COVID altering high school athletics, St. Paul's High School has been deep in the playoffs in many sports. The Bulldogs made regional appearances in boys' and girls' basketball and a school's first appearance in the state title game in football. Mr. Suggs praised the string of athletic successes and said it displays the hard work and dedication of the faculty, staff, and students. Prior to being named principal at St. Paul's High, he served as a Public Schools of Robinson County District Athletic Director, Principal of Fairmont High, and Assistant Principal and Teacher at Lumberton High. Mr. Suggs was recognized this morning in Greensboro by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association and Commissioner Hugh Tucker. Tonight, on behalf of the Public Schools of Robinson County, we would like to say congratulations to Mr. Jason Suggs."
Okay, the next item will be the Lumberton FFA Chapter of National Award, Dr. Robert Locklear.
Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Williamson, Board members, thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, we'd like to recognize our Lumberton FFA Chapter. So this time, we'd like to ask Principal Larry Brooks and our Representatives, Ms. Grimsley and Ms. Jackson, if you will please come to the podium along with all of your students. And at this time, if Chairman Simmons and Superintendent will come forward for the presentation of the award. The National Chapter Award Program is designed to recognize FFA chapters that actively implement the mission and strategies of the organization. These chapters improve chapter operations using the national quality, chapter standards, and a program of activities that emphasize, emphasize growing leaders, building communities, and strengthening agriculture. Chapters are rewarded for providing educational experiences for the entire membership. Chapters that receive a gold rating by their state FFA associations are eligible to compete for the National FFA 3-Star, 2-Star, or 1-Star ratings. This year, Lumberton FFA ranked Gold for the National Chapter Award. Lumberton FFA placed first and was recognized as the top overall chapter in the state of North Carolina. This is a huge accomplishment for this chapter, and we wanna thank our leaders, Principal Brooks, Ms. Grimsley, Ms. Jackson, for a job well done. But most of all, to our future leaders, these students standing behind me with their jackets on. And I tell them every time I see them, I still have my jacket from 1979, when I was initiated in the FFA. So congratulations. Chairman.
I wanna say it's an honor and a privilege. When I was School Resource Officer, I knew the teachers. I know Mr. Brooks when my son was there. It's an honor to win this award and it's even bigger honor for me to present it to y'all. Congratulations. Wait.
And also, we wanna recognize this young lady. She was elected as one of our Vice Presidents for the upcoming school year for the chapter. Sabella, we're very proud of you. Thank you for, for to say, yeah, thank you so much for all, every time I go to Lumberton High, I try to run into one of them and they do a fantastic job. The plant sale this year, I mean, y'all just done a fabulous job. And all of your projects you do in the communities, from the plaza downtown there, I just appreciate everything you've done.
Can we have each member, if you'll come and just introduce yourself, please? We're just so very proud of you.
Hey, y'all, my name is Lacy Rozier and I actually graduated this year along with a couple of my other fellow officers.
My name's Avi Nolly and I'm a Rising Senior this year.
My name is Taylor Stone and I also graduated and I was a 2021-2022 Chapter Treasure.
My name is Emily McDaniel and I am a Rising Senior this year and I was a 2021-2022 Chaplain.
Good afternoon, my name's Paige Leggett and I served as this past year's Vice President.
Hello, my name is Cameron McKinnis and I'm serving as the 2022-2023 Chapter President.
And my name is Bill Merlow. This past year, I had the opportunity to serve as Chapter President for this amazing chapter. And as they mentioned earlier, I'm now serving as one of the state Vice Presidents. So we really just wanna thank you guys for your support for our organization over this past year. Without it, we wouldn't be able to do these amazing projects that we work. So thank you for your support. Thank you to the amazing advisors, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Grimsley, and Mr. Pittman. Without them, we also wouldn't be able to do it. And without our members and officers, we wouldn't be able to do it. So on behalf of North Carolina FFA, I thank you for your support and ask that you continue to support us and advocate for agriculture. Thank you.
Okay, we will go with the HVAC systems for our school, Bob Waisen, Mr. Bobby. Is there any way we can look at maybe getting the outside company to try to help our maintenance people catch up?
Mr. Chair, we've had a conversation, and we have worked on that, Bob, you want to update us where we are?
Chairman Simmons, Dr. Williamson, board members. So, prior to school getting out, I had Mr. Ernie, I asked Mr. Ernie to check into having private contract, HVAC contractors coming to our school. He was able to make contact with two individuals that currently have license and are willing to come in and do work at that point. Since then, one of them had decided to back out, and the only contractor, if I'm not mistaken off the top of my head, is Chavis, and he is assisting Mr. Ernie at this time. And those individuals would be responsible for installing those schools that need compressors installed.
Next item is going to be the grass cutting, Bob Waisen, and Mr. Bobby, can you give us update on that? Because it was brung up yesterday about some things about the grass, can you give us an update on that?
Chairman Simmons, board members, Dr. Williamson, as most of you are aware, we contracted with two individual contractors to keep our grass cut, and we also took our own maintenance department and gave them a section of the county to cut as well. So, as with anything, in this being our first year on this venture, this has been a learning experience for us as well as the contractors involved as well. We are in constant communication with the contractors to meet specific needs at schools. Had a conversation with one of the contractors last week about some just fine detail not being met. And again, the contract is not binding past this year, so once this year is up, we will come back to the table and have a conversation and look and see how this work needs to be taken care of next school year.
Mr. Craig.
Chairman Simmons and Mr. Bobby, just one comment that's been, or two that's been expressed to me with your communications is when they are cutting, being very mindful of the vehicles that are around. I don't know if they're needing to blow off those vehicles afterward with grass being there. And then at schools, the entrance ways to schools, I don't know how much trimming. Some places I'll be in, I see they do a great job trimming, keeping that clean, and some places it's like the entrance is having been taken care of. So, those were two comments that have been made to me, if they could just be checked on, thank you.
Okay, and the next item will be the complex at Red Springs, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Man.
I just want to make a comment about grass cutting, and Bobby knows what I'm about to mention. You have to be take pride when you cut grass, take pride in the furniture that's on the outside, take pride in the cutting because sometimes you can damage things. And then when you damage things and you hit and run, that that's just, I went to a site the other day, and it was just hit and run when they did the damage, and Bobby was called, and Bobby took care of it. So, you have to take a lot of pride when you cook grass because in a hurry and you got to go somewhere and you damage things, it just doesn't look good. And a lot of times when communities set out bushes and plants, it means something to them. It may not mean anything to the grass cutter, but it means something to them, so that was just called. And if you indulge me one more minute, in the introductions while ago, my grandson was like, I'd like to acknowledge Jacob Bullard. This is my heart, Jacob, will you stand up? This is little Linda, and he missed the swearing, but I did want to acknowledge so he can leave, okay? Thank you.
Go ahead, on that way.
Mr. Chair, members, as you are aware, this is the first year that we contracted our grass cutting. Our intent was that our custodians can be in the building to clean our buildings. Bobby and I are constantly having conversations, and so as we bid another year, we'll add to what we've learned from this year as we bid that out. So, those improvements already.
Anybody else on this side, I'm going down and then come back. Anybody? This side, Cleech.
Our current grass cutting contract, is it one year, is it up now, or have we renewed it, what's going on with what we got going on now?
Our current contract will run us through October with one cut. And I think if I'm not mistaken, the contract actually ran from March to October.
Mr. Gentry, I'm sorry, Mr. Gentry.
Do the grass cutters have their own liability insurance, or are they under the insurance of public schools of Robson County?
Our two individual contractors met all the insurance requirements to be on our property. The third crew would be our maintenance guys, and so they would follow under our insurance if anything happened property-wise or if someone got injured.
Anyone else? All right, now, our next item is going to be the complex at Red Springs High School. Cleech.
Yes, an update on the, we need an update on the Red Spring complex. We're hearing different numbers out there about what's the cause, what's been done out there with the complex. We just need the overall update and the dollar cost because it's go from one extreme to another. So, I just want to, want to be transparent with everybody to see what's the cost of this complex. I'm not against the complex, and put that out there, but I want to know what's the dollar cost of all this.
Mr. Chair, members, we're in the process of finishing that project. Mr. Hunt and I talked earlier today, hopefully within two weeks, we'll do the walkthrough, the punch list, and we'll have all that information available.
Any question on this side? Any question on this side? All right, with that being said, the next item will be the public comments, Ms. Alice Freeman. Ms. Alice Freeman. Mr. Doug McBroom.
Just a couple of things, first, I've asked for months that the board correct minutes from the March board meeting. As a body, you refuse to do so. You all have the state law, because I put it out for you, every one of you, state law concerning official meetings of public bodies. March minutes were not full, not accurate, so maybe for some reason you feel like you don't have to follow the law, and I don't know if you do, I'd like you to explain that. But it's funny that every one of you have taken an oath, just did it tonight, saying you would uphold the state laws. So, this is one of them, so do it. Now, I've asked members what they would do, the superintendent had done something similar to them, they all told me that they would not just sit by and do nothing. But now you sit by and do nothing. That is unspoken, is unspoken approval of what's going on, and the superintendent doesn't have the right to use things like this as weapons to go after people like me. The board should order the minutes be corrected because that's the law, and you should reprimand the superintendent for it. I always tell my students that if something's important to you, you make it happen. If it's not important to you, you make excuses. So, do you have the courage to make it happen, or are you just going to give me excuses? Now, I have also included comments from people concerning that video. I previously looked at hundreds of comments from people trying to see if anybody disagreed with what I had said at that board meeting. And I think it's important to look for stuff like that, and I couldn't find anybody. Now, the comments provided, I only removed the names, mainly because of retaliation. I didn't cherry pick any of them, I just went straight down the line, and I did this because some of you seem to think that it's just me who disagrees with the fact that I do believe the board has failed the students and teachers for decades in many ways. I also thought about five pages of comments would be sufficient, even though there's a whole lot more than just five pages. And maybe you should look at those and understand that people, actually, it's not just me, people disagree with what the board has done for a long time. This is your legacy. Now, honestly, if you were a coach, you had one or two wins in a season, that wouldn't mean you were a bad coach. And if you went 10, 15, 20-plus years with records like that, I'm going to go out on a limb and say you're a bad coach. So, if you've been here for a long time, and the kids are still getting short-changed, and then probably you're part of the problem, and you need to fix that because you're not part of the solution. That also goes for things like the traditions, alternating the board chair based on race. I firmly believe that we should judge people by the content of their character, not the color of their skin, and it's sad that we actually are still doing that kind of thing. I don't like that, because I think that's very disrespectful to the people who are fought for us. I think that that's one of those things that's important for everybody, board new board members, I just very strongly suggest read the policies and the law. Follow the policies and the law, I'm not asking much on that. And asking you to do this just to fix it and make it accurate, I don't think is asking too much either.
It's your time, Mr. McBroom.
Y'all have a good night.
We go to the action items, Southeastern Charter Athletic Quest, Mr. Drawlon Hunt.
Good afternoon again, Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, board members. On behalf of Southeastern Academy, our principal Kristen Stone, Athletic Director Matt McDaniel, who is with us tonight, and myself, coming before you with a request, and that request is to allow Southeastern Academy to join the Public Schools of Robson County Middle School Athletic Conference. We feel like this would be a win-win situation for our middle schools and Southeastern Academy. As you know, we've lost two of our middle schools when we combined Roller Middle and Fair Grove to South Robson and send in thousands of middle students to South Robson also. With the loss of two middle schools, that cuts down on the number of conference games for our schools, and by adding Southeastern Academy, that would mean more games for our schools and will give us an even number of schools when it comes to scheduling, which means on game days, all the teams will be playing. If we had 11 schools, then a team would be, a team or school would have to sit out on game day. Southeastern Academy would have teams in volleyball, basketball, soccer, baseball, and softball. Southeastern Academy currently participates in conference games in Wilmington. That's why I said it's a win-win situation for both of us. Our schools get to play extra games, Southeastern Academy gets to stay in the county and participate against our county schools. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association has allowed high school charter schools and private schools to participate with our public schools for several years now, and this would be no different. Allowing Southeastern Academy to join our middle school conference would be no extra cost to the public schools of Robson County. It's just, again, allowing our schools to get extra games and allowing them to stay in county and play. Do you have any questions for me at this time that either Mr. McDaniel or myself can answer?
Mr. Lawson, if I share, if you have any questions? Motion. Mr. Terry.
Are there any, are there any issues in terms of legalities with allowing, with moving forward with this motion? Is there any legal implications for this agreement, would there be a contract involved?
As far as Southeastern signing a contract with us, no, I mean, we can put one in place if we need to. Yeah, and Southeastern, they would be responsible for their own insurance, their own travel, everything, yeah.
Mr. Schreit. Mr. Leach, anybody on this side? Mr. Bro.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a great opportunity that Robson County schools, as board members, we vote this in place because these students are of, most of them are of Robson County, and when they leave that grade level, they will be incorporated into our higher educational high schools. So, therefore, I think it's a good partnership, not only from a business standpoint, but also in the fact that it's putting peers together, and it's creating good athletic sportsmanship. I think it'd be a great move on our behalf to accept this recommendation.
Anybody else, Mr. Craig, Dr. Man, Mr. Gentry. I have a motion by Mr. Gentry, seconded by Mr. Leach, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 2020, 2022, 23 Public Schools Testing Council, Mr. Cindy Lewis.
Good evening, Chairman Simmons, Dr. Williamson, board members. First, I'd like to take this time to congratulate those newly elected and re-elected members tonight. We are, the Accountability Department, myself and Ms. Kelsey are sitting at the back, and we would like to present to you the 23, 22, 23 school calendar. Prior to that, just to give you a little bit of information on how this works for our new members, our calendar is established through a North Carolina Operational Calendar, and that is provided to us through DPI. They set up windows for us, and we fill those windows in into our calendar, which you approved. You can look through our calendar, and you can see when our test dates are. And if you have any questions on those, feel free to ask. Dr. Emmanuel.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Okay, am I recognized?
I'm going to go down this side and then come back, on that way, everybody get a chance. Mr. Lawson. Mr. Ocean. Mr. Locklear.
I know that when we adopted the school calendar, there was some discussion about, I don't think we can do it this year, but have we made any headway to work toward, or do we have the ability to allow students to take integrated exams before they leave for Christmas?
That is a calendar issue, and the calendar guidelines and policies are mandated by the General Assembly, so the answer at this point is, is there is not.
Mayor, we're required to test high school within the last five days of the semester. So, our semester ends in January, so we'll be testing them.
Mr. Schreit. Mr. Leach. Mr. Bro, Mr. Flower, Dr. Man.
Ms. Lewis, is there any, are there any of these tests that are local that we could delete if we could?
They are local, but they're district initiatives, that would be classworks.
I figure that.
And check-ins are also district initiative, as well as our formative assessments, which we have put at the same time as our check-ins.
So, how many days would you say that would entail our local initiative testing?
Overall, for the year?
Yes, ma'am, local initiatives, I don't mean the state, just, I mean, I could sit you and count, would you say 12 days, maybe?
I would say 10, 8, 10, yes, ma'am.
And somebody, Mr. Dr. Robert, if I may, Mr. Chair, you may ask this, the EAL, the new program that's coming, now, is that, does that have any kind of testing woven into it as well?
That is correct, Dr. Man, the assessments are interwoven with the curriculum, that is correct.
I guess what I'm saying is there, maybe I'm not asking it correctly, would there be a testing, district testing, something, something like classwork with the new program as well?
If I, if I may, Dr. Emmanuel, to your question, as we're adding programs and services, we're going to meet on next Tuesday, on our agenda is what do we take away?
We don't want to pile on, what do we take away? So part of that new curriculum, there is formative assessments, so we will not create our own. We're not having need to do that. So to answer your question, is we're not loading up and not taking off, and we start that conversation next week and get that information out.
Thank you. That, my concern was, and I appreciate the superintendent addressing it, we can see all this mandated by the state, and there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, it is what it is, yes. But I think there's something we can do locally, probably to stem some of the testing, hopefully one day. That was, and there's nothing to do with you. You do a super job. Appreciate what you do.
We tried to combine some of those weeks so that we're testing within the same week. Like you'll see with Classworks and Appleify, we tried to do them within the same timeframe so that we didn't spread that out. So we were trying to work toward that, because we knew that instruction was important.
Mr. Chair, I vote to approve if there's no more discussion.
Thought Locklear had a question.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call him, sorry.
And just to follow up, Dr. Emmanuel, and Ms. Lewis did mention it, but there was a committee that was put together that was made up of central office folks and school administrators that looked at the calendar based on what the twenty-two, twenty-three academic calendar was, to make sure that we, like you said, we didn't have a lot of testing going on, because that was a concern that we heard throughout the year. So we did address those. So I just want to, you know, share that with you. Thank you.
Mr. Gentry?
I have a question. Is, is there, and maybe I missed it with the... For re, for retakes, for students who need that particular credit for graduation, and is there a first opportunity incorporated for students that were absent on the original date of testing?
First, we have a testing outside the window, and we actually have to have the approval of our district or our regional accountability officer to approve that. We do for the next, ten days afterwards. So we do have that.
Mr. Craig?
Out of order.
Are you fine?
Dr. Emmanuel triggered the thought, and, and this has been answered, but just to reiterate it, we've all heard this, all the test dates, be it required by the state, be it required by us, new programs, old programs. So, as Superintendent Williamson, glad to hear you say, and just to reiterate from all of us, and I'm gonna say me, but I think all of us, anything we can do to take away tests that we don't have to give, that's not required by the state. And again, we've talked about, okay, we've got this Program A, we got Program B, Program C. If we can get list of those to staff and say, this is what's here, now this is what we're taking away. That where everybody can see, you know, adjustments are being made. We're trying to be mindful of your time in the classroom and not taking up time from everyday classroom instruction. So glad to hear that. Look forward to results from the meeting that you're gonna have next week. Did anything we can do to relieve those burdens? And Ms. Lewis, thank you for everything you do with testing. That is not an easy job. Sometimes it might be a little slower, but other times it's, it's wide open all the time, with all the stress I'm gonna say that goes through with dealing with that. So thank you for what you do each and every day. And Ms. Kelsey, back there in the back. So thank y'all.
Anybody else? Okay, Dr. Emmanuel, go ahead. Thank you. Motion?
Make a motion that we approve the testing calendar.
Seconded by, motion made by Dr. Emmanuel, seconded by Mr. Henry. Motion approved. Finance report, Ms. Hugh McQuaid. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we gotta go back. Just, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now the finance report by Mr. Hugh McQuaid.
Good evening, Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Williamson, board members. In your packet is the monthly revenue report for the month of June. It's now the expenses and revenues.
Mr. Craig?
A couple of comments. Mr. Hugh, is there anything new with what you have?
No, sir, not in this.
Okay, for the, the financial report, okay, I'm gonna make this comment, and then I will make a motion that folks, all board members, Mr. Hugh and Ms. Erica will be glad to go through this step by step at any time.
Yes, sir.
But if he has nothing new tonight, I would make a motion that we accept the financial report as it's on paper we have here.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Bro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who has the, I think, closed session? Okay, this time, Mr. Randy?
Yeah, budget amendments.
The budget amendment for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, Mr. Hugh?
Yes, sir. The budget amendments are in your packet, and these are nothing more than the year-end budget amendments where you had to move money from one line item to another to get things balanced, require viral policies.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the budget amendments.
Okay, so, motion made by Mr. Craig. Seconded by Mr. Gentry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Rusher? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I do want to recognize Ms. Selson, her leadership as finance officer and her whole department. We did close out this fiscal year, and we can't give you a dollar amount, but Hugh, correct me, I think we're gonna add to our fund balance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, and Erica and Finance Department for the job we have done.
Hit your button.
And I'm, there you go. I move that the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County go into closed session for the purpose of discussing certified and classified personnel, North Carolina Jones Statute 143-318.11A1 and six, and to consult with the attorney retained by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, North Carolina Jones Statute 143-318.11A1 and three. I need a second.
All in favor, will, aye?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
We'll come out of closed session now. Make a motion. Who made the first? Mr. Terry, you have a question?
I had a question about the proposals for the law firms. Is it still open for firms to submit proposals?
It is not. That closed on June the 30th. We did receive three response to requests for proposals. And then we received one past that deadline. Just for information, that's in the folder. And then we'll talk about the process next month.
Anybody else?
Make a motion to approve personnel as amended and pending, I guess. Is that correct?
That's correct.
A motion by approval on personnel as amended by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Henry. All in favor? Say aye. Motion.
Is there anything else?
Anything else? Who made the motion? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Leach, second by Mr. Henry. We are adjourned. Second by Mr. Leach. All in favor?
Let me ask you a question. We're officially closed the meeting. Do we need to reopen the meeting?
Yeah, that's what I was just getting ready to say, tell John. Is to, who made the motion to adjourn? Was it Vontae? Vontae, just withdraw your motion to adjourn.
Second. Make a motion, let's make a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
I make a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
First by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Leach. All in favor?
Now you can adjourn.
Make a motion, motion to adjourn by Mr. Henry, second by Mr. Leach.